Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order and start the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes?
I've got two things. Karen, on the first page, middle of the second bullet, under legal update, just an apostrophe after members. Sorry about that, but I'm a American idiot. And then on, like, members plural possessive, members speaking time. And then on the next page, under the first bullet, since Beth made a point to point out what EDP is, I thought maybe we ought to say economic development payment to spell it out in the first second sentence under the first bullet. And then, just a couple sentences after that, it says, "And lastly," I would just put the word specify before which, specify which budget or funding account.
The same bullet?
Uh, same bullet, two sentences later, it says, "And lastly," comma, then I would insert the word specify which budget or funding account. Those are the changes I had.
Are you approving these things?
I'd like to make a, if anybody else has any, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes I just outlined.
Say it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a legal update today.
Not much of one. I've had to give these updates in a lot of communities. I can't remember which communities I gave them. We are still trying to figure out the impact of the Senate Bill One and then the subsequent House Bill fourteen twenty-seven. Senate Bill One allowed business personal property to take an exemption up to a million dollars this next year and then two million dollars the following year. Soon after that, House Bill fourteen twenty-seven passed, which said, "No, you don't get the million dollars this year." So that's going to be eighty thousand dollar cap, which is kind of where we are now. So the impact over this next year may not be as great when it comes to the business personal property tax, but the two million dollar tax exemption is still on the books for two years from now. We'll see if something changes over this next legislative session. We still don't have numbers as to how this budget cycle is going to impact, but that's what these guys are for, to walk you through those numbers. And still kind of guessing game, and we'll see where it pans out. There have been a couple other changes through the legislative process which we're gonna have to take a look at, but obviously the budgeting stuff has been the most important, given the times framework in right now and the potential huge impacts that it would have. But with those other things, it's gonna be things related to permits and things like that. Who can draw permits? What can the county do? When we talk about building permits improvement, land improvements, grade occurrence, things like that. There is some new legislation that we're just feeding through as to whether or not. It's still gonna be all controlled by the county entities, or that we're gonna have the individual landlords able to hire their own people to review plans and things of that nature. So happy to answer any questions.
That's good news. For a while.
We think.
For a while, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Everyone, your packet, you should have received an invoice from the Boone County Chamber of Commerce. It's for, the invoicing date was actually August of twenty twenty-four. I believe it's membership from September twenty-fourth through August of this year. And so we asked that it be on the agenda so we could have a discussion as to whether or not the council would like to continue being a member of the Boone County Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I think this goes back to when Elise was still on the council and I think she joined. I think it makes sense if we continue, if we go ahead and actually take advantage and go to the meetings and get engaged with that particular group, which is very involved in the county. So that would just be my two cents. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about involvement or going forward.
Well, I think it's a good thing. It really is. And I think moving forward makes sense.
Elise paid this personally the last time it was paid, so I'll have to put out your supply line. And this is twenty-four, so you'll come to probably, you'll have the other for twenty-five. Yep. Whenever that comes out. Yeah, it looks like we'll probably get one in August.
I move that we pay the invoice out of supplies and that we continue forward and actually engage as a council, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna start our presentation with Jennifer Sharkey on the wheel tax.
All right. Good morning. You all, are you okay?
Yes, thank you.
I'll go ahead and get the presentation up and make sure that it is being shown properly and then we can get started.
Jennifer, just one second. We're gonna try and turn the volume up in the room.
You probably need me talking to see if the volume got turned up. Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Can you say something, please?
Sure, yes. Good morning, and I'll go ahead and do a quick introduction of myself before we get into the presentation. So I'm Jennifer Sharkey and I work with Indiana Local Technical Assistance Program out of Purdue University. Actually, a former county engineer, so I served almost eight years as the county engineer in Steuben County. And coincidentally, during that time, I was able to work with our local elected officials at the county and municipal level, and we did institute a wheel tax and excise surtax. So I have been through this process from, I suppose, your side of the table, if you will, and would be happy to be a resource if Boone County is interested in moving forward. But this presentation is really just an informative presentation on what the wheel tax and excise surtax is, how it can be implemented, utilized, and then we'll talk a little bit about House Bill fourteen sixty-one. So is the volume level adequate at this time?
Yes, it is good. Please proceed.
All right, wonderful. Well, just to give a quick update, I won't read the text on the slide, it's more for your handouts, but if you haven't heard of Indiana LTAP, so we are a program which is nationwide. There's an LTAP in every state, but we really provide technical assistance, technology transfer, research, conferences, workshops, training programs. Really, we're here to serve you so that you can serve your community. And the best part of it all is we are a free resource for local agencies. So anything that you need assistance with, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. You can see our vision and mission statement there, but for the sake of time, I'll go ahead and move forward with the presentation. And so we really focus on six main areas with one whole B, asset management, which is kind of where this presentation lies, because asset management includes the asset management plans that you all provide every year and the others, like you know, operations reports and financials for your transportation infrastructure network. But we also provide other resources should you be interested in the future. So today, we'll go ahead and talk about the wheel tax and excise surtax. And then we'll conclude with the House Bill fourteen sixty-one, which is part of it, the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program, as well as some discussion on direct distribution, which is a new avenue of funding for local units in the future. So what is LOHAT? So we call wheel tax and excise surtax combined as LOHAT, the local option highway user tax. So it is two separate taxes, but they must be adopted concurrently. So you have the wheel tax portion and then the excise surtax portion. And these are designed to support local road and bridge funding activities. And it was first passed in the Indiana Legislature in nineteen eighty. And as we move forward, you can see there's been changes to the law, most recently in two thousand fourteen, which allowed a county income tax council to be able to adopt this funding mechanism in addition to the county council. Also had some revisions to motor-driven cycles or mopeds and allowed for variable rates for units or classifications in the excise surtax. And then it was in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen when there's a road funding initiative at the state level. You know, the gas tax increase, there's some other funding mechanisms put in place, like the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. And at this time, it also allowed municipalities, initially population ten thousand or greater to adopt LOHAT, but then lowered that threshold to population five thousand and greater. You can see there are some other changes to the current law. In two thousand sixteen, it doubled the amount of the rates if a county had an asset management plan. So that's when asset management plans really came into play with the addition of the Community Crossings Program. And then in two thousand seventeen, there were some changes to the effective date of adoption and when that revenue would be collected. And then most recently here in two thousand twenty-five, it does require a local unit if eligible. So it would be all ninety-two counties, as well as the municipalities. Population five thousand or greater must have a wheel tax and excise surtax or combined, call it LOHAT, to be eligible for that late mile distribution or direct distribution opportunity. So again, LOHAT is two different taxes. It's the county motor vehicle excise surtax, as well as the county wheel tax. And basically, they go hand in hand. So you must have both adopted concurrently, and you must amend or rescind those concurrently. Amend might be a little bit misleading. If you amend the rates of one, you don't necessarily have to amend the rates of the other. But if you amend some of the conjoining information of the two, then they must be done concurrently. And again, cannot have one without the other. So you can see the reason for having both is because they apply to different types of vehicles. So the vehicle excise surtax applies to the vehicles that are eligible for the excise tax at the state level. So you can see the applicable vehicles there typically the smaller, lighter motor vehicles. And then the rates, you can do it as a flat rate. So minimum is seven dollars and fifty cents per vehicle, and it can go up to fifty dollars per vehicle, since Boone County does have an asset management plan. Or the other way a county can implement this excise surtax is based on a percentage rate. So it could be as low as two percent, up to twenty percent of the excise tax. However, it does state that it cannot be lower than seven dollars and fifty cents. And then there's an opportunity, as you saw in the changes in legislation over the last several years, that rates may vary between the different vehicle classes, and we'll show an example of that later. And then the county wheel tax is applied towards vehicles that are larger or heavier vehicles. And these rates can only be applied as a flat fee. So anywhere between five dollars, up to eighty dollars, and again, rates may vary between the vehicle classes and weights. So just to clarify, a wheel tax is not a tax per vehicle. Sometimes that gets a little confusing as it's called a wheel tax. It's a tax per plated vehicle. So as the example of the different vehicle classifications, a county may set a rate. You know, if you have a smaller pickup truck of thirteen thousand pounds, you have to put in a forty dollar registration. And then maybe for the larger, heavier vehicle of a semi-truck, it's eighty dollars per registration. Again, just an example to show how that can be utilized for different vehicle classes. There are some exemptions. It does not apply to the vehicles listed here. So any owned by the state, state agency, political subdivision, school bus, a bus owned and operated by the religious or nonprofit youth organization, as well as the funeral equipment vehicles there. So how to pass it? So the county council, again, must be currently passing ordinance that adopts both the county wheel tax and the county motor vehicle excise surtax. And then, as you saw in the legislative history, there is an opportunity that if your county has an income tax council, that unit could be the adopting entity under this chapter. But if it's the county income tax council that adopts LOHAT, then it must be the county income tax council that modifies, amends, or rescinds it. So it can't be county council for one activity, county income tax council for another activity. Which other unit initiates it and adopts it is the unit that quote-unquote owns, I guess, that ordinance and the future of it. So for the effective date, just to give you an example, if you pass it this year before August thirty-first, the collection of the funds would begin January twenty twenty-six. If the unit passes it after or on September first of this year, then it would become effective in January of twenty twenty-seven. So just keeping that in mind as far as when those funds would come into play for your unit if Boone County decided to move forward. And again, there's a lot of text on these slides, mostly to people that came out for reference in the future. But how the funds are collected is that these are paid at the time of registration. So the BMV branch or office collects these funds. They do charge a service charge of fifteen cents per transaction. And then there's other provisions in there that the BMV may adjust the fee there based on when that registration is due or a new registration comes into play. So they have their opportunities there to make sure that the correct fee is applied. And then there are some provisions in Indiana Code as far as, you know, stipulations of timelines. Not more than twenty-one days after the BMV collects it. They'll remit that to the county treasurer, not impose the surtax. And then also with that remittance, the bureau also files a collections report. So there's additional reporting activities that happen with this revenue mechanism. And then the funds that are collected from a county enacted wheel tax is distributed to all the local units within that county based on the local road and street formula. So there are some activities that the county auditor, as well as the county treasurer, would need to follow to be able to distribute those funds appropriately. And again, you can see there's some timelines here of the twentieth day of each month and then the twenty-fifth day of each month as far as depositing, allocating, and distributing those funds to those other local units. So for Boone County with a population of one hundred fifty thousand, the distribution formula of the LOHAT funds would be fifty percent based on population and forty percent based on mileage. So that's how you can do some calculations as to what the county would retain versus what would be distributed to each local unit based on the total amount of revenue estimated. And we have prepared some estimates on that week that you can see at a minimum rate and a maximum rate of what Boone County could expect for all units, and then also what that distribution would look like to each local unit, as well as what would be retained by the county at those different rates. So these funds can be used to construct, reconstruct, repair, and maintain streets and roads under your jurisdiction, or it can be used as your matching funds for the, what they call in Indiana Code, local road and bridge matching grant fund, which we know as the Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund. You can see here that there have been several units that have adopted the wheel tax and excise surtax. About fifty-five counties highlighted there in that orange-yellow color. And then there's several cities and towns, excuse me, sixteen of them so far, with Carmel being the most recent. So they'll be getting collection in twenty twenty-seven for that funding mechanism. Now here's an estimate for Boone County. This is based on the BMB construction data from twenty twenty-three. So this would be for all units. So this shows what the flat rate fee would look like from seven dollars and fifty cents as a minimum up to fifty dollars as a maximum, accounting for the BMV branch fees of that fifteen cents per registration for their service fee. So based on the number of registrations that would be received, as far as the data from BMV, you can see Boone County as a whole would be either, you know, just shy of five hundred seventy thousand upwards to three point eight seven million. And that would be for the excise surtax portion. And then we go to the wheel tax portion, again, for all units. At the five dollar minimum, up to the eighty dollar maximum, again, accounting for those BMV branch fees. It'd be around twenty-one, twenty-two thousand up to three hundred fifty-six thousand, which would be collected through that revenue mechanism. So then, as we look, based on flat rates and what the allocations would look like from that local road and street distribution formula based on population and mileage, Boone County proper, as far as the government, would retain about thirty-six point seven percent of those funds. So two hundred seventeen thousand up to one point five five million. And then you can see the other local units with that allocation amount would look like. And I believe, if I understand correctly, there could be some discussion or some inter-local agreement with Zionsville as far as ownership and maintenance responsibilities of the roadways there, so that would pay consideration since they're the next largest unit based on the local road and street formula that would receive funds. And the population and mileage data that we utilized was from the twenty twenty-four state comptroller reports. As I said before, for the excise surtax, it can be implemented based on a percentage base. Sometimes local units like to do that to kind of scale. If it's a lower value, older vehicle, they might pay less than a brand-new, higher-value vehicle. And you can see this here, so it's a little bit more complex. I'll go through just the high level of it, but if you wanted to look at this a little bit deeper in the future, I'd be happy to meet in person to do some calculations there. But it's based on the fee schedule outlined in Indiana Code, and it takes into account the age of the vehicle. So brand-new is age zero, up to nine years old and above would be that upper threshold. And then also taking into account the vehicle classification, which is based on the value of the vehicle when manufactured. So it could be, you can see the different categories there. And then there's a fee, a base fee, that is utilized. And this is the base fee that is utilized when applying that percentage rate. Now, there is a caveat there that trailers up to nine thousand pounds, motor-driven cycles or mopeds, and then vehicles manufactured before nineteen eighty-one, they all have a set fee regardless of the age and vehicle classification. So those are the dollar figures that would be utilized for the percentage rate surtax. So we have a little bit of an example. You can see the fee schedule there. Items highlighted in yellow is just the lowest amount. But it's now twelve dollars, twenty percent of twelve dollars is not seven dollars and fifty cents. But since that's the minimum that can be charged, then those vehicles all would be charged the seven dollars and fifty cents. And then it goes up from there. So you can see the most vehicle would be charged based on that five hundred and thirty-two base fee for the vehicle value four hundred two thousand five hundred and greater, brand-new, would pay one hundred and six dollars and forty cents for the excise surtax fee if a twenty percent maximum fee was selected. And then for those other vehicles, the trailers, mopeds, and vehicles prior to nineteen eighty-one, they would all be at the minimum fee of seven dollars and fifty cents through this mechanism. So this is a sample vehicle registration that it would, how it would look like should a wheel tax and excise surtax be implemented. So the yellow is the information that's used to determine the appropriate fee. So you can see the classification of this vehicle is classification fourteen. It's thirteen years old. Since it's registered as a truck, the weight comes into play, which is eleven thousand. So that means it would be an excise surtax fee, not a wheel tax fee. You can see the county of the registration is in green, and that all they're creating for the county wheel tax, excise surtax, that is the fee that this vehicle is being charged for the county LOHAT rate. Now, in blue would be the municipality of registration. So this municipality Angola, they are eligible to institute LOHAT or wheel tax, excise surtax. At this time, they have not done so, so that is zero dollars. But should they do that in the future, then there'd be a charge in that blue box for the municipal wheel tax, excise surtax. And then just to highlight in the orange, that this is the state registration fee that's charged on every vehicle. And fifteen dollars of that is deposited into the Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund. So if you did institute this, what we did in Steuben County is that we educated our constituents on what this would look like in that change, and actually had this publicized in the newspapers so that as these, as the wheel tax and excise surtax was implemented, you could see what that was utilized for. So now we'll go into House Bill fourteen sixty-one. One of the questions is, is that will it institute LOHAT to be eligible for direct distribution through this new funding mechanism? So based on the Legislative Services fiscal impact, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which this is based on the state fiscal year, so that starts July first, twenty twenty-five, it's estimated that there would be, oh, just shy of two hundred fifty million in the community crossings fund. Now, a hundred million of that will be set aside for the matching grant portion. So the grant that you're used to, having two calls a year, NDOT is currently reviewing their grant process to see what this new allocation of a hundred million dollars per fiscal year, how they will do their grant program. But that gets set aside. There's also a railroad tax credit transfer to the general fund. And right now, Legislative Services has estimated that that would be no more than fourteen point five million. So that would be the maximum, so that's why we're budgeting that in this calculation. And then there would be twenty million that would go to the state highway fund, which is to be utilized for the local tracks program, so that would be coming off the top. And then for this first fiscal year, there, it's outlined in Indiana Code that the carryover of about one hundred and fifteen million would go to fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. So there's no CCMG direct distribution to local units for this first fiscal year while they build up that reserve. And then when fiscal year twenty-seven comes, which is July first of twenty twenty-six, we have the carryover of a hundred and fifteen million from the previous fiscal year plus the new estimated revenue based on the state registration fee, as well as other revenue mechanisms that go into the community crossings fund. So it's estimated there'd be just shy of three hundred and seventy-five million. And again, there's the hundred million that goes to the grant program itself. Another fourteen point five million maximum for that railroad tax credit transfer. Then we have the local tracks program of the twenty million that gets allocated. And then this comes into play, which would be new in this fiscal year, is up to fifty million to the city of Indianapolis if they can match it with fifty million of new funds. So I'm not sure where that might lie from fiscal year twenty-seven. So then it's estimated that there could be anywhere from a hundred and ninety million up to two hundred and fifty-five million available for that late mile distribution to local units. So what that means for Boone County, this direct distribution, it's based on the proportion of late miles of the eligible local units. And to be eligible, a local unit must have a wheel tax, excise surtax. So this distribution amount is a bit challenging to identify. So this distribution amount is a bit challenging to identify what that could be, because it can vary based on how many local units have wheel tax, excise surtax, and then, of course, the proportion based on that total late miles of what is being utilized. So in a conservative estimate, Boone County could look to receive one point seven million up to two point two million if all local units had LOHUT or the excise surtax wheel tax in place. So that's a conservative estimate at this time. And as we move forward to fiscal year twenty-eight, again, beginning on July first of 2027, we have the estimated new revenue of two hundred and seventy-five million, take off the hundred million for the grants, fourteen point five million for the tax transfer, twenty million for the local tracks, the fifty million for Indianapolis. Then it's estimated that this fiscal year, there'd be eighty-nine million up to a hundred and fifty-five million for distribution to the late mile mechanism. So for Boone County, that would be about eight hundred thousand up to one point three million on the conservative end. And then, as we move forward, there's some changes that happen to some of the off the top distributions. So come fiscal year 2029, we have the two hundred and ninety-four million estimated as the revenue available to distribute. We still have the hundred million community crossings grant money that gets set aside, but now we do not have the railroad tax credit transfer, so that is no longer coming out of the community crossings fund. We still have the twenty million of the local tracks program, the fifty million for Indianapolis, which would then leave about a hundred and twenty-four million up to a hundred and seventy-four million for the distribution. So for Boone County, conservatively, that could look at one point one million up to one point five million free utilization. So here's all of the fiscal years together as far as what the Legislative Services Fiscal Impact statements get available. So we have the total funds that are available for distribution for each year, the hundred million that gets set aside for the community crossings matching grant program, the first three years have the railroad tax credit, which is maximum, about fourteen point five million that comes out. The tracks program, I believe, we go up further than fiscal year 2029, I believe it's only five years that this twenty million comes off the top, so in year 2030, it would be there, and then after that, it would no longer be a direct distribution for that program. But the Indianapolis distribution remains after fiscal year 2027, or starting in fiscal year 2027. So then the actual direct distribution funds that are available would fluctuate a little bit from year to year, but you can see that for Boone County, starting in 2027 fiscal year, one point seven to two point two, and then the next year, eight hundred thousand to one point three million, and then in fiscal year 2029, one point one to one point five million. And again, this is estimated based on all local units having a wheel tax, excise surtax that are eligible. So it would be all ninety-two counties, municipalities of population five thousand and greater. So these actual amounts may vary and could actually be more in the first few years as communities either decide not to adopt the wheel tax, excise surtax, or if they're a bit delayed in implementing that revenue mechanism. So just in summary, what we know currently is that LOHUT is comprised of the two taxes, the wheel tax and the excise surtax. Now, have to pass both concurrently, and they do apply to different types of vehicles. So no single vehicle would pay both a wheel tax and an excise surtax. Wheel tax can be a flat fee of five dollars to eighty dollars. The excise surtax could be a flat fee of seven dollars and fifty cents up to fifty dollars, or it could be based on that percentage of the two percent up to twenty percent of the excise surtax fee schedule that we saw earlier. That's made LOHUT revenue at the flat fee rate for Boone County, based on the 2023 B M V data, two hundred seventeen thousand up to one point five five million. Again, that's for all units. And then to qualify for the C C M G direct distribution, starting in fiscal year 2027, Boone County must adopt the LOHUT ordinances and and texts. So based on the C C M G direct distribution, the amounts over the next few years could be eighty thou, eight hundred thousand up to two point two million for Boone County. So things that we don't know at this time is when the direct distribution would be dispersed to local communities, since it is based on the state fiscal year. We don't know if the state would do that as a lump sum come August, if it's spread out over the year. They're still working on their administrative and what that would look like. We also don't know how it would be distributed, if it would be distributed and have to go into its own fund, or if it's distributed and then could go into like your motor vehicle highway fund, or another highway department, funding mechanism, a local road and street. So I'm not quite sure how the state is going to administer those. And then, of course, the amount of the funds from year to year is variable. So I'm sure the state's working on how to forecast and estimate that for local units. Because the one area that I didn't have on the slide is that if the maximum award amount for the grant program currently, I believe, is at one point five million. So let's say Boone County, through the direct distribution, received one million dollars. Well, that means Boone County could apply for the community crossings grant program for the difference of one point five and one million sold for five hundred thousand. But let's say that Boone County got two million in direct distribution, and the grant program maximum amount is one point five million, then Boone County would not be eligible to apply for those grant funds. So there's some nuances there that would need to be worked out from the state end and administratively on tracking those dollars. So with that, I know it was a lot of information. Hopefully, it was outlined in an easy-to-digest manner, and I'm sure it would take some time to go through and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, Jennifer, Kevin Manhorn here. With respect to the fifteen cents, that's one five, that's collected, you had mentioned in the slide that it goes to the county treasurer. Does the county treasurer get to spend those dollars the way he or she sees fit?
So that fifteen cents is actually the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, they collect it, the state agency, for their service fees. So that would not come to the county auditor or treasurer, so that would retain, be retained within the B M V.
The B M V tells us where the, what entities receive what dollars.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I had a quick question or two. You mentioned that website, so I put that in my phone, and I was just curious, should I see those same estimates on the website for Boone County? And if so, where is that? I get to, like, a dashboard button? Is that, I'm just curious, I couldn't find it quickly, but...
Sure, let me stop sharing the presentation and see if I'm able to bring up that website for you, so...
While you're doing that, did you say fifty-seven of the ninety-two counties have this, or did you not say? I can't remember.
Fifty-five at this point in time.
And are you guys assuming that the other thirty-seven are gonna jump on this because they're sensitive, or is it just, is that a crazy assumption? I mean, I know you included that assumption in your conservative estimates, but...
Right, yeah, so conservatively, we want to make sure that we weren't overestimating the direct distribution for any unit, so we did assume that all ninety-two counties and, so don't quote me on municipalities, but I want to say it's like a hundred and forty-six that are eligible to adopt it, would adopt it. So, yeah. For the resources here, we have our local roads and bridges and all, it's a bit varied, which is why I put the link there.
That's fine.
The wheel tax, excise surtax. So on this website here, or webpage, it does go through a little bit of what the presentation had as far as what these mechanisms are, but if you look at these links with the estimates and click on the PDF link, hopefully, this is still being projected.
Yeah.
And it kind of gives a little explanation as to how these numbers are being estimated, and then it goes into every community, and you can see Boone County here, what those minimum and maximum rates would be. And I believe I misspoke on the summary slide, so the minimum and maximum of the two seventeen and the one point five five million is the Boone County share.
Right.
So the actual for total for all units would be, would be higher.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
What happens if Indy isn't able to match that fifty million? Does that get added to the direct distribution pot of money?
My understanding is that it would, that it would be retained within the community crossings fund at that time, which would then be distributed. And one other item of discussion that happened in the State House that didn't end up getting changed was that if a municipality within Boone County that's eligible to adopt a wheel tax, excise surtax, so population of five thousand and greater, for them to receive direct distribution, they would have to adopt their own. So if Boone County adopted wheel tax, excise surtax, that doesn't qualify the local units within your jurisdiction to apply, or to receive direct distribution funds. So that could mean some of those residents within the municipalities, they would be paid in the county LOHUT, as well as if the local unit, the city or town that was eligible, adopted their own. There was some discussion during the process of this bill of unstacking those, but if it did get unstacked, then that means the county would not be able to collect wheel tax and excise surtax funds from residents within municipalities. So that did not pass, it passed in one of the amendments, and then it got removed and got struck in another amendment. So this bill had a long and winding road throughout the legislative process. I don't know if any of you followed it closely, but it, I could anticipate that perhaps in the future, after this process gets implemented, there could be more discussion on how some of this works out for local residents. So just wanted to have that in the back of your mind, too, as you're looking at this option and what that might mean for your communities.
So Nick, this is probably for you. If we wanted to see a spreadsheet that shows what we used to get before the change in the legislation versus what we could get if all municipalities and Boone County applied, could we, could we get that in a future meeting, or have you already provided that? And I've missed it.
So I haven't provided anything from what we did get to what we already, this is still a moving target. I think Pat Conner, that works with Jen at L T A, had provided me a spreadsheet and said, hey, if everybody got the wheel tax and it was a hundred million dollars, here's how much you could get, so you could keep changing those numbers in there. But what we previously got and were able to count on was one point five million dollars in community crossings. We basically budgeted for it. The last five years or more, we've been able to, we've been getting awarded everything that we've been sending in applications for, and we've maximized the one point five million dollars.
Okay.
Right now, we've been told by NDOT, the cap is likely gonna go down to a million instead of one point five, and there's only a hundred million to give away instead of three hundred and fifty million, so don't bank on it. Those are their exact words. You may see an award, but it may be a few hundred thousand dollar awards for more communities instead of the one point five million dollar awards that were going out previously.
Okay, so one point five should be our comparative for anything that comes through in terms of what are we getting now, or what do we think we're gonna get now with or without a wheel tax versus the one point five? Is that the right eggs, apples and apples kind of comparison?
I think at the high level view, that's exactly what you need to look at, is that the one point five million dollars was what we were getting. We have no guarantee of any of that now. You might get something, it's a one call per year instead of two, there's a lot of other little things that go into it, but we were able to count on one point five million, and now we are not able to count it.
Nick, the lane miles, does that include the state highways that run through Boone County and...
It would only be roads in our jurisdiction, so roads that we currently maintain. I don't wanna dive too far in the weeds, but there's some issues that come up with the rural Zionsville that we maintain. She mentioned how this is broke down by population and the local roads and streets formula, and Zionsville technically has those within their towns, we have an interlocal agreement, they get the population credit. There would have to be some more work that has to be done that's unique to Boone County than any of these other counties because of that situation. But we would not get credit for any of the city streets for our road miles, or the state roads for our road miles, or federal populations. It would only be roads that are in our network and our jurisdiction.
So we still gonna have this overlap issue with Zionsville?
Yeah, so when the local roads and streets formula is used for the distribution, that is where the population credit goes to the town.
Okay.
And that is how this gets distributed for the wheel tax, not for the direct distribution. The direct distribution has different streets attached to it, and that's not...
For the wheel tax.
Correct, just for the wheel tax. And that page that you flipped to now shows Boone County's amount is thirty-five percent, Zionsville's amount's thirty-something percent, that's the number right there that would be the one we'd have to figure out, because we're still taking care of those roads, but the population credit is going to Zionsville.
Exactly, okay.
And for the dollars that you receive, Nick, as the director of the Boone County Highway, assuming that this passes and those dollars come into your office, do you, as the director, get to use those dollars in the way that you see fit as the director of the highway department?
So all the dollars would still go through the county council for appropriation during the budgeting process. The local roads and streets has restrictions on it. So there's specific things in Indiana Code that wheel tax dollars would have to be used for, that they can't be used for certain other uses. The direct distribution, my understanding is, goes by the eleven seventy-three restricted fund uses. So both very much highway uses, but a little bit difference in what they can and cannot actually fund. So yes, we would have to go through the budgeting process, we'd have to lay out exactly where we want to appropriate the funds, and then they would just...
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, thank you, Jennifer, for taking the time to present to us today, and I'm sure we will be in touch.
Sounds great, thank you all, wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan Cowan with Baker Tilly.
I'd be the one that looks like it's a big tech, though. People can't find out they're paying twice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Cowan, I'm the senior manager with Baker Tilly. It's a pleasure to be here again this morning. Each, for the past few years, we have prepared a comprehensive financial plan for the county. What I have this morning to discuss with you is the preliminary draft update of the information for the C F P for the coming year. Sherry included me on the email that she provided to you all yesterday, so just a few opening comments about that. I know that state enacted Bill One is on the top of everyone's mind with the changes it's going to bring in the future years to the county and your revenues and how it will affect those revenues. As Sherry indicated, we do not currently have a model in place that we feel truly shows what that impact will be for Boone County. We are currently using the numbers that were provided by the Legislative Services Agency, that's a state agency that works... That's a state agency that works with obviously the legislature to provide them revenue impacts as they go through the process of developing bills. So we are currently using those numbers. However, we anticipate at some point within the next month maybe, we will have an in-house model that will hopefully be able to give you a clearer picture of what those potential revenue impacts look like. Now, right now, '26 is not where a lot of the changes take place. '26 will be relatively status quo. Currently, we have been under for the past two years, a cap on the max levy growth. It was been capped at 4%. That was a legislative change that was made for '24 and '25. So we are currently still operating within that cap. That cap will stay in place for 2026. The max levy cap will be no greater than 4% growth in '26. Going forward, that 4% has not been written in the legislation. It could, we, as of right now, it looks like it will go back to the previous calculation of max levy growth for '27 and beyond. Of course, everything I'm saying is with the caveat that we don't know what they will change next year. This is as things are right now. Things could change next year or the following year and this could all end up being completely different. So right now, we're all struggling to get a hand on this and just, and see what's going to happen. But again, knowing everything I'm saying today, it could technically be changed in the future. So this year, we, like I said, we will still have the 4% cap. The past two years, we have also had changes to the calculation of the homestead supplemental credit. In 2023 and prior, the homestead credit was calculated first with a $48,000 deduction and then 35% of the remaining home value was, reduced the amount to come up to net assessed value. For the past two years, that, first the primary deduction has been 48%. In 2024, it's 48,000 and the second step was a 40% deduction. This year, it's a 37 and a half percent deduction. We had assumed it would go back to 35% in '26. However, it's going to go the other way and it's going to go back to the 40% in 2026. Then going forward for the next six years, the top number, the first number, the $48,000 is going to decrease while the second number will increase and step up. By the end of, in 2031, the deduction will finally be such that a home will be assessed at no more than one-third of its gross assessed value. What that will lead to is decreased overall net assessed value across the county. That means that you're making a smaller pot, a smaller base of AD to spread your levy across. Now, does that mean you're definitely going to see reduced net assessed value? It does not, because if you have enough growth over and above those deductions, it is possible that you could still see growth. In certain areas such as Boone County where there's new homes being built, where there are things being added. Because it will really take adding, like homes or adding businesses to your assessed value base in order to keep growth, not just continuing to increase the value of the homes that are currently and the properties that are currently in your base. So it is possible that you could still see growth going forward. It just may be limited, maybe not as much. And as you constrict net assessed value, the other thing that can happen is that it could cause rates to increase. Increasing property tax rates generally also goes hand in hand with increased circuit breaker loss. That's where the major, the main potential for your revenue change and loss would be, was potential increases to circuit breaker. That's what we hope to better estimate for you with our model later this summer. Exactly what that potential increased circuit breaker loss could look like as over time those deductions change. So we can jump into the report. Page one talks a little bit about these changes in assessed value and potential changes to max levy cap. There are going to be future changes in budget process. You don't have to worry about that for '26. But as you get forward looking at your 29, in '29 or your 2020, 2030, excuse me, budget, you will have to add an additional public hearing to your budget process each year. Whereas now, every unit is eligible to take their max levy growth without doing anything special. Starting in 2029, you will have to hold a separate budget hearing to say that we plan to take advantage of the max levy growth that is available to us for the year. So you would have one hearing where that would be the topic, then you have another hearing where you would discuss what the content of the budget would be, the topic. The other thing that changes, we go into on page two with Senate enacted, enacted Act 1, is local income tax. The local income tax structure, as you know it currently, will go away as of January 1, 2028. You'll have to start planning for this change in 2027 at the very least. Because where you currently receive certified shares income tax, you receive public safety local income tax, and you receive a jail correctional facility local income tax, those types all go away. Starting in 2028, the graph there in the center tries to explain the new types. First of all, there is a county services general local income tax. That one type will replace the three that you currently have. That is up to a 1.2% tax on all of the adjusted gross income in Boone County that comes back specifically to the county. Whereas currently, your certified shares is divided up between the county, the municipal units, the townships, the libraries. That all gets divided up. This top level county services income tax stays specifically with the county unit. The county can also adopt up to four tenths of a percent for fire protection and EMS. The three primary types of unit that goes to is fire territories, fire districts, and municipal fire departments. You as a council can make a decision if you'd like to also give that money to township fire departments and volunteer fire departments. It would then be distributed based upon population of service area. So you have to determine who all you would want to give it to and then that, that allocation would be worked out based upon the population of that service territory. You as a county can also adopt a non-municipal lit. That is up to a rate of two tenths of a percent. That is again on the AGI base of the entire county. Non-municipal units would be considered libraries or townships. In some, certain circumstances, solid waste management districts or airports would be considered as well. In Boone County's case, your solid waste management district does not currently receive property tax nor does it receive local income tax. So it would not for this case be considered a non-municipal unit. But you could also choose to, these units would petition you to potentially adopt this two tenths of a percent. Each type of unit can only get up to a half of a tenth or .05%. So if you had townships and libraries come to you, the maximum rate you could potentially adopt would be .1. So you would receive potentially .05 that would go, it'd be divided up to your libraries, again based upon population. And then .05 also, which could go to townships, again divided up based on population. As you can see, I've said nothing about, you know, specifically public safety, specifically, you know, jail lit. This general services lit that you would receive would have to be used to replace those current lits. We assume that it will all be put in your general fund. We don't have that guidance yet from the state, from the GLGF or the state board. But they're calling it general purpose revenue. And in other cases, when they've called something general purpose revenue, they want it to go into your general fund. So as we get into the report, you'll see where in '28 and '29, both revenue and expenses get moved into your general fund from your existing public safety lit and your jail facility. Now, and I want to note too, that fire protection and EMS is not public safety lit. It is not for the sheriff's department. That only goes to fire departments. And again, it's not, you don't have county specifically fire department, but it would be, I don't believe you have it, I don't think you have a district. I'm not sure if you have territories, but that would be something you would give to the fire departments of the city of Lebanon, Zionsville and Whitestown.
Does that also include the township, and I'll use Lebanon as.
If you decide to.
Township.
If you decided to.
If you decide.
If you decided to, to give it to the township departments. The township departments and volunteer departments are the second step of that decision. So if you looked at the amount of revenue and determined it was sufficient to divide it between all of the units, you could make that decision.
And did I understand you correctly when you said, would each one get .05 or the .05?
No, that's the total amount, that's the total amount that comes in.
Split between that amount.
And then it's divided up based upon population. You know, now currently lit is divided based upon relative proportion of levy.
Okay, thank you.
So it goes to a population-based distribution. You know, they haven't said anything about cities and towns yet either. I talked about what you get, the townships, libraries. So any of the units that are over 3,500 people, so that's going to be Lebanon, Zionsville and Whitestown, can adopt their own lit, their own local income tax that is just on the AGI of the citizens within their boundaries. So they can adopt up to 1.2% for that for themselves. The smaller towns, Thorntown, Jamestown, Vance, you would be responsible for adopting up to again, 1.2%. And that would be against county AGI less the AGI of those units that can adopt their own lit. So it would be the full county less the AGI of Zionsville, Lebanon and Whitestown. That is the amount you would then potentially collect and distribute, again based upon population, to those smaller communities within the county. And that's, again, you as a council choose to adopt that. So there is a maximum rate for anyone in the county of 2.9%. So if you think about it, there could potentially be a rate, there will be a rate for the people that live in Whitestown. There will be a separate rate for the people that live in Zionsville. There could likely be a separate rate now for the people that live in Lebanon. Then there will be a rate for anybody that doesn't live in those three communities for those amounts that you have as a county council have adopted and put in place. That maximum rate can be 2.9%. Currently, your adopted lit is 1.7%. Keep in mind, that's divided up differently than this new, this new rate would be. But I think due to the limitations on the non-municipal and how you have lit and how you have to adopt it based upon type, all of these types together would add up to be 3%. But because of that limitation on the non-municipal, I believe you would come in at the max 2.9% if you adopted the maximum rate for everything. We've made an assumption in the report that you as a county would not have to adopt the full 1.2% to reach the rate, the amount that you currently bring in and lit. You may choose to take something over what you currently get. At current, we have a .65% amount, equivalent amount included in this report. You know, that's, and that's based upon current AGI. You have to look at what AGI is going to be in '28 to consider what you would really need to adopt. So you as a county may not have to put in place the full 1.7% that you could put in place. You may, may only, need to only do a portion of that. So this is a situation where, again, your lit depends upon where you live. So I think HR directors should be a little bit concerned and scared of this because you're going to have to keep track of, it's going to be like where a person lives, what their address is, as to what their lit rate's going to be. So this is going to be a very, very big administrative issue for HR directors. Because of course too, if someone lives in Clinton County and works here, they're going to have a different structure, which they do currently. But it'll be a different, possibly potentially more complicated structure in Clinton County for somebody to have to do the withdrawals here and then vice versa, whatever happens. You know, here the other counties would have to figure out because your lit will still follow you back to where you live regardless of where you work.
When you say HR, do you mean payroll?
Payroll, HR, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Anything that determines what your deductions are going to be in your, you know. So that's going to be a concern, I think for businesses. So the first chart we have here is to indicate your circuit breaker loss. You show currently, in 2022, this is just you as a county, as a county taxing unit, lost about $400,000 in circuit breaker. Up to in 2025, the report that just came out had you losing about $504,000 in circuit breaker. The next four bars, the yellow block indicates that legislative services, potential extra amount of loss because of this change in deductions to the 1% properties. There's a new deduction on 2% properties, which has never been in place before either. 2% properties, eggs and second homes were always, bills were always calculated based upon their full value. There's a new deduction on those properties as well as a change to the algorithm of how those properties are valued to begin with. All anticipated to potentially decrease the net assessed values. So per legislative services, they believe that you as a county in '26 will lose an additional 1.252 million in revenue, in property tax revenue, potentially because of Senate enrolled Act 1. So those yellow blocks from '26 through '29 indicate additional loss on top of the red bar that you were already anticipated to lose in circuit breaker. So again, in the blue, the area that you collect, that, that property tax part was just getting smaller each year because of those potential reductions.
So Susan, if you're a taxpayer and you're over 65 and you don't work any longer, chances are you're probably the only demographic that benefits from the latest changes because you're going to pay less in property taxes and you're going to not be affected by the lit because you're done working.
Right, right, unless you have income revenue or certain other, there are certain types of revenue that you could essentially.
That's, that's the one demographic that's benefiting from all the yellow.
Generally, yes, that, because you don't have, you're not using property tax replacement credit lit here in the county. So that's not going to change anything for anybody, but likely. It, it depends on the value of the home too. There's, there's a point at which everyone would be, you know, certain values and above will be affected, other values not. There is also a new credit on everyone's bill where you can receive an additional, at the, after the end of the calc, at the bottom of the calculation, whether you're at your circuit breaker caps or not, you can receive an additional 300, up to $300 credit, 10%. So.
At some point, it would be nice to see what the additional lit is going to do.
Right.
The savings you got in your left pocket might.
Right.
Taken up in the right pocket when you start paying all the lit.
Yeah, and that, and that will help you make your decision on what point, what rate you choose to adopt your lit and what anticipated revenues you would have coming in. For example, your current lit brings in about $30 million. That 6.65% estimate is about $32 million in revenue. So, you know, if you're losing here an additional 1.2, maybe it balances it out, close to, maybe not. But yeah, that's definitely something that we want to get to you so you can make those decisions.
And Susan, do you, with the big elephant in the room with respect to the wheel tax, do you, as the one who prepared this, do you take into consideration if the wheel tax in Boone County, Indiana passes, that those dollars are going to come in and these numbers will change?
Actually, these numbers are based only on property tax. We don't have wheel tax in here, so yes, it's, knowing that you now are considering the wheel tax, the next version of this you would see would include the wheel tax information in it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. The next part is just a pie chart that shows basically how circuit breaker loss is divided up as a whole within the county. Municipalities have most of the loss, schools have a fairly large portion. You as a county contribute 6.8% of the total roughly 7.3 million in circuit breaker loss that's already in the county. The next page is meant to show relationship to tax rate to net assessed value. We've talked before about how that's an inverse relationship, how as rates generally, you see them decrease as net assessed value goes up. You know, potentially that, this is one of the places where we may start to see that shift. You may start to see the red bars go down and the blue dots go back up. Again, as net assessed value potentially could decline because of these new deductions and credits in the new bill that was passed. The next chart is just meant to show where your current local income tax is. Rates on it say that your current rate is 1.7 and you're getting only the certified shares of public safety and then the county itself gets the correctional facility lit for the new jail. And then we have the amounts there at the bottom of the page that show the totals that you're currently bringing in. Now, the large jump there in 2023 was because you added like correctional facility lit in 2023 previous to that, you were not collecting it. We do, you know, I don't have to tell you this every year, oh, you have a question?
Can I say a quick question?
Sure.
Earlier, I can't remember the exact number, I think it's maybe .86 would equate to what we currently receive. Is that the total that we received, the 30 million?
Yeah, that, yeah, it was .65.
.65, okay.
And that, so the closest, you know, we just got as close as kind of as we could. And that would bring you about 32 million roughly. So your current collection is. So your current collection is thirty point three eight six. And it, I have it in your, in the general fund, I'll point out the line that it's on so you can see the amount that we put in there for that.
Okay, so at a minimum, we can still collect what we currently are?
Yes, at a minimum.
And at a lower rate?
Yes, yeah, right. Page seven is just sort of a combo graph to show some of those, when we put general reassessment, health motor vehicle, local road streets, statewide nine-one-one, and together along with food and beverage and lit public safety, we see where, over time, those funds are decreasing. A large part of that is in some way because of capital, capital projects that are included in your capital plan. And we do need to do a revision to your capital plan for twenty-five. So we'll be reaching out to Debbie to set up times to talk to department heads, sending out information ahead of time to get that updated. We have the information included from last year's plan, but understand those things change fairly regularly. So definitely want to do a fresh update of that for you as well. Uh, the next page, page eight, shows in general those funds this year that have currently budgets that are somewhat out of balance, not that they can't be funded. Your budgets can all be funded this year for twenty-twenty-five. Some of them may be using cash reserves, but some of them are out of balance. Unless we have lit public safety, that one's not right, that one should not be red, sorry about that. Um, because we have had some things that have happened since we did revenue estimates last year. Lit supplemental distributions came out, you did receive lit supplemental distributions. So that's additional cash to your general fund, your public safety, and your jail fund. So where some things stood last year, budget time was slightly different, again, because of those additional revenues this year that we, you, those are never guaranteed, and I should say in the future, under the lit, after twenty-twenty-eight, there will not be supplemental distributions going forward. They've changed the requirement on how much can be held at the state in reserve. So the goal is to dispense most of it in a given year rather than keeping reserves and holding things back. So you wouldn't be counting on that supplemental distribution each year going forward.
And that takes effect in twenty-twenty-eight?
Twenty-twenty-eight, so you would have to make the decision sometime spring, summer, twenty-seven, have it adopted by October first to start collecting under the new scheme in January of twenty-twenty-eight. And the, I mean, the three other municipalities would have to have everything for theirs adopted under that same timeline as well. Can jump on ahead then to the, the next few pages are just assumptions that we use, um, putting the report together. We did still assume some growth in net assessed value, but we assumed it equal to growth in levy, so four percent max. We're assuming growth in, as, uh, levy over the next few years, and we just equalize growth in net assessed value. Again, that will have, we'll have to do some further analysis on that, but that should just not really change the rate too much. It may, may some change in the rate going forward.
So this has no, none of the LEAP district impact?
No, we, because there's that economic development payment question, we've tried to get that information.
But regardless, we don't have those properties coming online and showing tax receipts.
Right, some of those would.
Starting in what, twenty-nine, twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven.
Seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, so yeah, so those, those estimates would need to be included there, too, that may bump that number up some what, yeah, that's entirely possible. So this is sort of conservative of look, but, but, you know, the, again, those properties coming online doesn't net you new revenue other than potentially local income tax. But it changes, it manipulates your rate, it helps, you know, keep your tax rate lower.
And is our rate, I meant to ask you this several pages back, is our county, our property tax rate still one of the lowest on the list?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the, it's like, it's like right under eighteen cents right now.
Right.
And relative to most counties that I see, that is quite low. And I think even one day when I sorted the database, they came out, I mean, you are, I think, the, the lowest one on the list.
Okay, is that something we can get a revised, like, can you put that in your notes to tell where we land in the latest?
Yeah, I can, we can look that up based on the current information of all the other counties in the DLGF information. Yeah, so you know, you're, you're, the part that you're, you know, putting in all the other district rates, yeah, we can give you that information. So we'd go ahead and jump to page twelve. This is where we start with your general fund, generally your largest, most active, and where most of your revenues come in as far as property tax and local income tax. So just, um, there on line five, we pulled in the potential impact that would be allocated to the general fund of the local, of the Legislative Services reductions potentially in revenue. And then down on line ten, which we now call Lit County Services, that amount is added in under twenty-eight and twenty-nine, so about thirty-two and a half million compared to the thirty point three that you currently bring in. Again, if there's, you know, increase in AGI, you could potentially get that for maybe a half a percent rate. Or it just depends on where, where the economy is at that point and where wages are. So in most cases, these revenues are fairly, fairly stable. There's still the issue of interest and where that's going, that's been pretty high the past couple of years. We anticipate that to start to go down, we are seeing that going down. I don't, do you have any special agreements or arrangements with any banks on your interest rates or?
Making issues at, in the trust.
Okay, okay. So that, you know, two, as we see cash reserves going down, that potentially interest could drop as well. But for the most part, the, the other type of, um, local sorts of revenues, we're taking a three-year average and estimating that amount out going forward. We would consider some of the revenues that are currently in other funds, since we in twenty-eight and twenty-nine are bringing in the lit revenue here, we would consider other, like, SRO reimbursements that are currently in lit public safety also coming to this fund and everything then happening here from the general fund instead of like your current local income tax fund. That is, like I said, assuming that the state board gives us a directive that that lit in the future will all need to come to this fund rather than being separated out in a more transparent way.
Susan, in, starting in twenty-twenty-two, down there were total operating receipts, twenty-three million.
Uh-huh.
And then all the way up to twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-seven million. And then all of a sudden, in twenty-eight, it goes to forty-four and a half million.
Well, that's because, as I just pointed out, on line ten, where we add that lit, we add in that Lit County Services. So, you know, not only are we adding in the receipt, but we're also adding in the expenses. So that's down in the, the expense section on rows twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Yep.
Those are the expenses that will then follow that revenue in also. They'll come in from Lit Public Safety and from the Jail Correctional Fund.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't anticipate that they'll tell you, you have to immediately shut down your public safety and your jail funds in twenty-eight. You can probably spend whatever you have there until it's depleted, and then you would move things over to the general fund. So that sort of depends on what your cash reserves look like the end of twenty-seven, how much you have left to, to support anything from those funds. But at some point, we would anticipate the directive will be to move all those expenses and all of the revenues to the general fund.
If we wanted to start reserving for deferred maintenance, where would that go? Would that stay in general?
For?
For the jail?
For the, um, yeah, it would, it would end up being the general fund likely.
And then would we allocate it? I mean, we, we have our own line item to say deferred maintenance for the jail, for the justice.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we could, so that Tony knows, like?
We'll have to figure out what the, the state board will let you do with that money.
State board will have pretty, I'm not sure they'll have five split funds that we have to use.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll tell you, and if, if there's some way that you can, you know, keep that in reserve. They haven't done anything with like the rainy day transfer stipulations. You could potentially hold it in rainy day, maybe something like that to keep it out of the general, the pool of the general fund. Um, but you would have to keep track of it separately somehow. So that may, for your, for your deferred maintenance on the jail, there would, because the, it's likely the revenue will come here to the general fund. So you have to develop a method internally to track that and keep that amount so that you're not considering that as a, you know, in general budget.
Right.
Funds available in general budget. Uh, so there, um, at the bottom, your net operating receipts, if you look in twenty-two, you added about four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, twenty-three, you added two point four eight, twenty-four, you were at four point one nine. What that means is that you spent less than your receipts. So you added to your cash reserve balances. Going forward, we expect a small amount this year, then as we start to see the impacts of that Senate Bill One come in, maybe not so much adding, but using more of the reserves going forward. On the next page, we have this non-operating revenues, type of one-time receipts, one-time expenses, one-time transfers. And we always have used in the past, we talked about where, where is your cash reserve pool, what's your cash reserve bowl be? It should be a minimum of fifteen percent, generally a maximum of around fifty percent. It depends on what you're planning on doing with those cash reserves. If you're going to make some one-time capital purchases, if you're going to do other things, you that, that cash reserve balance can, can be used for those items. So currently, the peach bar at the bottom shows roughly where your, your operating reserve is. So you end in twenty-twenty-four with an operating reserve of seventy-five percent in your general fund. You know, and honestly, the bigger your general fund is, probably the more balance you should have. But you're a bit over that fifty percent at this point. So if there are one-time type maintenance things that need to be done, if there are capital projects that need to be done, you could consider that. However, as you look forward, twenty-five looking to twenty-nine, that number's dropping. So either you're making a decision to add more lit to this pot to support that a little bit more, or we can determine that those impacts that the LSA are giving us maybe aren't the true picture, then we can get a better picture in there of what those reductions in revenue look like to, to help shore that up a bit.
So if we did nothing, we get to seven point four percent?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, if, if you adopt a, a lit that keeps you the same amount you get and nothing else changes, and this is the true loss, this is where you would be, yeah.
Put a dead spot for those reserves in rainy day, of course you don't know what's true.
Right.
Yeah, because you still have the ability, it's a, a ten percent, one time a year, you can do a ten percent um, amount of all your budgets. So if you look at your budget order, whatever the total budget number is at the bottom, if it's ten million dollars, you can take ten percent of that from your general fund and put it into your rainy day fund. And I know in the past, you've like sometimes put your lit supplemental in there, you've made other transfers in there, but that is a, a, some place that you could put that. The next page basically shows the fifteen and fifty percent, just the, the red line is the fifteen percent, the green line is the fifty. And, and that's going up because we're putting those expenses in on public safety and jail. So your, your, your bar gets higher when you put more expenses in there. And then we're showing the blue bar, which is the actual, or the estimated fund balances, you know, sort of going character to that. The next fund is your reassessment fund. Um, this one, you will need to at some point probably give it back some more property tax. You've, you've shifted away with these because they had a pretty healthy balance. And so we've shifted away, but now it's starting to go the other way. So, and you can do that every year. You can take property tax from the general fund during budget time and shift it here, shift it to your health fund. You can't freely shift to CCD or Cube Bridge, but you can shift back and forth between general health and reassessment. So either reduce or move expenses or put more property tax to this fund sometime in like the twenty-seven to twenty-eight time.
Is that what you would do?
It needs to be done.
Yeah, so we think that.
They can't sustain that right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we just do that during budget, during budget time, you just divide up the levy where you want it to go and, and that's how that gets taken care of. And it, and with these, you know, health and reassessment, you don't want to put too much there long-term because if you need it in general, you can't just randomly take it from here and put it back in your general fund. So it's better sometimes to have it in your general fund because the general fund can be used for any purpose of the county. Whereas reassessment is specifically for reassessment and assessor functions, health is specifically for health department functions. So this one would need some support potentially as early as twenty-seven, depending upon what the budget looks like this year. Next, we have your county health fund. Now, this one, I tend to went the other way, and I could have taken some levy away from it, but did not because the other thing that came out of the legislative session is reduced funding to Health First Indiana, which I know is not in this fund, it's your eleven sixty-one. But if there are functions that you're going to maintain from eleven sixty-one that will no longer have financial support because that was cut to, you know, now forty pers, was from a hundred and fifty million over the next two years to forty million over the next two years, um, you may need to shift some of those items back here at budget time if those programs are going to stay in place. So again, you're, I'm showing a balanced building here, but that's because we don't know what you may have to do in twenty-six and twenty-seven because of Health First Indiana funding. Uh, the next page, nineteen, is your local road and street fund. Unfortunately, you don't see a lot of increase in these funds over time. If you just look at the, the top line, number two, for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, it went from six hundred and forty-nine thousand in twenty-two to six hundred and seventy-six thousand in twenty-four. Not even a thirty thousand dollar increase in a three-year period. So I mean, we're, we're seeing this across the state, it's not just here, very small increases in both these and the motor vehicle highway funds. So this one is a capital fund, this one, you're not paying for people from this fund, this will be your buying supplies, buying equipment. Um, but again, road, road related. And then next is your motor vehicle highway fund. Again, this one, and I know you struggle with this every year, what gets put here, what gets moved to general, what goes into food and beverage, um, based upon the current budget and the current items that we have in the capital plan, the budgets here would not be sustainable past this year. We've got it set so that receipts are set equal to disbursements in this fund going out for twenty-six through twenty-nine. Obviously, that's something that you'll be discussing during budget season to figure out exactly where some of those items are going to go and where that support is going to come from. Uh, this one requires the minimum fifty percent of your motor vehicle highway funds. You have that allocation set a little bit differently. Currently, I think we have it at, um, forty percent here in this fund and sixty percent in the motor vehicle restricted. And that motor vehicle restricted again is for preservation, construction of road, maintenance of road, maintenance of road surface. This one can be used for general supplies and for human resources, uh, payments, salary and wage payments. Next is your statewide nine-one-one fund. Um, this one, again, due to capital projects, has some potential funding issues starting in twenty-twenty-eight. There's a, there was a large project there, if that value was changed, maybe that would make it different. But there's some issues there that we, that may need to be addressed or a, another funding source found for, uh, the plan of the capital project here from this E-nine-one-one. This is another one that we don't expect to increase, it's gone from eight sixty-four in twenty-twenty-two to eight thirty-two in twenty-twenty-four, actual receipts.
Do you remember what project it was?
Vesta? Um, do you know what that is? AT&T Vesta.
Um, is that IT, Tony?
I'm sorry, Tony.
Is that IT?
I believe it is AT&T, Vesta is.
It's about an eight, eight billion and a ninety thousand dollar project. So again, if we can revisit that when we talk about capital projects. Um, next is your food and beverage tax. This one has been seeing slight increases. I think last year at budget, we thought maybe it would be around one point eight million, the actual amount that came in was one point six. This is another one that has some capital projects, some road items here that may need to find an alternative source. And I realize you're also in the process of talking about reissuing road bonds. Your road bonds are getting ready to start maturing, one will be matured at the end of this year, the next, one will be next year and following. So Brian will be just talking to you about that potentially, so some of these road projects may need to shift to that, to any reissuance of bonds coming up over the next three years, the new revenues there. Uh, next is your Lit Public Safety Fund. Again, we're showing in twenty-eight spending down, whatever you had eligible, available there at the end of twenty-seven, and then assuming everything would be moved to your general fund by twenty-nine. Uh, going forward on the, page twenty-nine is your Lit Correctional Facility Fund, same thing. This is the first year you received a supplemental distribution for that fund, it was about one point four million dollars. But again, we would estimate everything, debt payments, jail operations, everything would be moved to your general fund um, after everything is finalized in twenty-eight into twenty-twenty-nine with the new lit structure. Uh, then you have your Cumulative Bridge Fund. This one, you had reestablished the rate. For this coming year, you reestablished to, to point oh two two eight. However, some of the capital plans, the items here are pushing this one over. So again, this is a, an evaluation of where these capital items may need to find alternative funding unless you chose. But again, this one, by changing the rate, you don't get new revenue. You just shift revenue from your general and other funds to this one because it is considered within your max levy cap. We just keep it at the two, the rate, whatever it's established at, and that's where the revenue from the max levy is allocated. Next is your CCD Fund on page thirty for the cumulative capital development. This can be used for any capital purpose through, in the county. You are slightly under the max rate of this one, the max rate doesn't, it's point zero three three three. You would not get a substantial increase in revenue unless you had somehow a substantial increase in net assessed value because this is a rate that is applied directly to your net assessed value for revenue. It's with, it's considered outside of your max levy cap. So again, there are some capital items here in this fund that is pushing it to plates that may not be sustainable in twenty, even the twenty-six budget. Again, depending upon what you, including your twenty-six budget. So this one, uh, again, those capital projects just need to be addressed. Next is your motor vehicle highway restricted fund. This one, like I said, receives currently about sixty percent of your motor vehicle highway receipts. And again, there's some large capital rep. And again, there's some large capital road projects there in that fund. Finally, we have your riverboat fund, that was just again, a small portion that dropped fairly substantially a few years ago from what you were receiving before. You now get about sixty thousand dollars a year. So any budget for this fund should just be equal to roughly about sixty thousand dollars. And then last on page thirty-nine, we just show a snapshot of what your rainy day fund currently looks like. So currently you have about four point three. So in addition to the reserves you have in your general fund, you also have the four point three million here in your rainy day fund. And Debbie said maybe you could somehow, you know, move more money there or they've been leaving your general fund. That's, that's your decision as a councilor. The last actual cash schedule we have is for your debt service fund. This is where those, that road bonds are currently being repaid from. We just assumed new bonds of a similar repayment amount are included here to pick up for the ones that are dropping off this year and going forward. The final pages of the report are things like description of funds, what you can use those funds for. Uh, through page forty-three, then page forty-four, five and six show your budget to actual for the past three years. So when you look at the column that says budget, percentage of budget expended, generally we say between like ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent would indicate fairly conservative, sound budgeting. If you have consistently operating funds where you're only spending thirty or forty percent of the budget or you're spending way over that amount, maybe you need to tighten up the budget process on those funds. If, if you're spending only thirty to forty percent, is that budget inflated for some reason? Is there, you know, we understand that with capital, you know, sometimes with capital budgets, that happens. You plan a project, the project doesn't happen, so you don't spend the money, it has to be spent for next year. But, you know, keep your eye on the general fund.
Why would debt service, I'm just looking at, again?
Which year?
Forty, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-two and on page forty-four. Why would debt service be, was that just?
Justice center bond.
It was, it was just a center bond and something got paid from the wrong fund this year. It was actually made up, I think, the next year. Yeah, so it got taken care of, it got moved around. There's, there was some confusion where the things were paid from and how things were paid. So it, it's been straightened out, but yeah, that was, because normally you expect to see your debt service fund paid at a hundred percent or close to a hundred percent because that's all that's coming out of there. But that was just due to some internal-
Okay.
-process issues. So I mean, for the most part, you have, you know, budgets that are within the, within those ranges, especially in your main, your general operating, your main operating funds. Uh, then we just have at the end, uh, there's forty-seven and forty-eight, this is summary of your current capital items. So we'll get those updated. And then the last pages are debt, if you have a question about what debt you currently have, how much you're currently paying for that debt, all of those items are listed. Some of, and you can see the different sources, some of them are property tax, some of them are local income tax, some of them are TIP. You have a number of different sources there. So by the time your July meeting rolls around and you start budget workshops, we should have an updated version of this for you. Some updated revenue estimates. We anticipate everything otherwise lit would follow the same general schedule. We've had the past few years, we'll get those preliminary estimates probably in August for your lit for this year under the current structure with that final amount not coming out until October. Usually we get a huge gap in your budget. But um, so does anybody have any, I know there's a lot here to think about and look at. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out or if you have questions now, I'm, I'm happy to address them.
As, as the expert of what comes into the county, not only the Boone County, but from what I understand you work for other counties also. When, uh, then Senator Brown was running for election for governor and he talked about, we're going to change the um tax structure with respect to dollars that you and I as homeowners will pay or business owners. What, when he talked about those numbers, did you as the smart one in the room say to yourself, well, wait a minute, this is going to affect all these ninety-two counties throughout the state of Indiana? Did you ask yourself, how are these counties going to take into consideration the loss of dollars coming in? And then, how am I going to explain to these county councils that I work with, here's what you folks are going to have to do in order to stay above water? And if so, what were the answers you came up with?
I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but that, I thought about that personally the whole time. I don't think anybody who serves an immunity, this whole advisory role across the state, whether it's us or any other firm, is taking the same thing because it changed so much. You know, please understand, we are involved in the process, we're involved with groups, we're involved with AIC, we're involved with, you know, people that were going in, giving testimony and things like that to this. See, it's been a concern all along as to exactly how we're going to do this because no one answer works for every county either. Every county's different. You have decidedly different, you know, issues here in Boone County than say Floyd County does on the river or Newton County does up north. So we have to, that's why we're trying to develop our own internal model so we can be proactive and we help our clients figure out exactly what is going to do to them and how they can address it best long-term. What's the best role for you? You know, like I said, you don't have PTRC. A lot of counties out there that have property tax replacement lit are scrambling like crazy because in many cases, their homeowners won't see bill reductions, they'll see bill increases. So it's just, it's not affected any one unit the same way. Even within a county, you'll see different, like Whitestown's going to be impacted differently, you know, than Lebanon is, than Zionsville is. So it's going to be different for every, any client we come in touch with. So that's why we're trying to develop our model and create our best practices to, you know, position you, you know, again, not knowing that they might go back, we can create this great plan, then they go back and change something or rework something or take out a stipulation. That changes the whole ballgame again. So it's constantly just trying to stay proactive and on top of legislation and figure out exactly how it's going to affect-
Well, thank you.
-clients.
You sequestered a staff and threw a room and say they can't come out until the end of July.
We're close. We're close, yeah. You leave the pizza outside the door.
I wondered who that was or-
Yeah, we have, we have a pretty large group working on an internal-
We're cheering for him.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to seeing what they produce.
So real quickly, Susan had to give a very diplomatic answer to one of the questions that you just asked Councilman Van Horn. But she's, right, anybody working with communities across the state of Indiana is absolutely happy to think of that issue. And what this council needs to be aware of and the taxpayers for Boone County be aware of is the message coming out of Indianapolis is that there's this tax cut. The, for, to save money from the state. That's not what's happening. What it is, is a shift from Indianapolis to the local entities. And so that's why you heard about the wheel tax, how you're going to have to implement the LOHA in order to qualify for community crossing match grid, which is already money taken from this community in local road streets. There are several other things that have shifted and moved. So in order for Boone County to provide near the same services that you have provided in the past, you are going, the Indiana legislature and the uh state have mandated that you are going to have to enact taxes. So unfortunately, for residents here, it's going to look like this entity is voting to raise taxes, but that's the only way you can close the gap. Part of it as well is, remember, Susan talked about the four percent maximum growth uh for your levy. What has also happened is they have gotten rid of all maximum levy growth appeals besides the errors. Last year, you guys took a million dollars in excess levy growth. I think before that it was seven hundred and eighty-some thousand. Those are real numbers that you have no mechanism to get back. It's essentially a punishment for the communities like Boone County that are growing at a much greater uh rate than any other community that you are now having to provide services for this excess growth at still a four percent growth. So you guys are getting ready to go into a budget set, cycle that you are going to have to think about a lot of things. You're going to have to really talk about raising taxes and this, you know, I always say listen to your MAs when you go through these budget cycles. Know it is, this year and the next couple of years, as you try to get your arms around what this actually means for Boone County and taxpayers, you guys need to work hand in glove with Baker Tilly through this process because LSA doesn't know what the numbers are. We don't know what the numbers are, they don't, we don't know what it is. It's just a good speaker. That's a less diplomatic answer.
And what would you say to the, and please excuse me if I'm using the wrong word, to the antagonist that says, aha, you're raising our taxes again, all seven of you are, you're probably going to raise our taxes. What would you say to the antagonist?
I would say, unfortunately, we have had to because of what the state legislature has passed over this past year. It is just a show game um that is putting the burden on the locals. Because it's not just going to be you. Lebanon's going to have to do it, Whitestown's going to have to do it, Zionsville's going to have to do it. All of those communities got community matching grant funds. And now they have to have a loan. All of those communities had excess levy growth appeal that they just don't qualify for anymore. It's not available, despite the fact that those are the three communities that are growing at an exponential rate. We're talking about not four percent, we're pushing twenty percent.
And the other thing, I guess, Jewel, um, it's just, I think Susan commented on it. The way to counter this in a county like Boone is we have going for us, if you take that mindset, growth. And that growth could yield higher NAV, right? And there, there will be circuit breaker credits, but depending on what that growth is and how it falls within the buckets of growth, that is rooftops or commercial roofs or, and or employees who actually stay here versus, you know, they come in during the day and leave. That could significantly impact the quote-unquote impact of what you just described. Is that fair?
At a four percent growth quotient.
Right.
Right, if you were able to capture the entirety of it, it spreads it out, it would be better. At that four percent though, your levy is only going to grow four percent. So on your tax rate, it may have a bigger impact.
Right.
Because you're going to have this other AV. Uh, but your levy is only going to grow four percent despite the fact that you're going to have to offer services. On the local taxes, when they're getting rid of the lits and things of that nature, remember, there's going to have to be a lot of work that goes along with those lits as you transition over to different funding mechanisms. Because you have got a bond for a jail that is backed by your public safety. You have all of these things that you're now going to have to transfer and transition over to this new issue. Like it, there's not, I don't foresee much of a savings on the lit side of it because of the obligations that you have, right?
Right.
The fire protection lits. Communities that went to, they fired territory over the past two years are freaking out because they don't know how they're going to fund. They anticipated a seventy cent uh opportunity, they're capped at forty. So sixty percent, fifty-five percent of what they have funding for. Those are kind of the holes that you as a council are going to have to find and plug up, uh, to provide the services. It's not going to be a fun couple of years. I'll remind you, you guys all want to hear from us. Thank you.
Does anyone need a quick break or do you want to keep moving forward?
I'm good, I'll keep it.
Okay, um, Brian Colton with Baker Tilly?
This is the later word.
Okay.
Do you get stand-up checks? You did a good job on the-
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, sure, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wish you everything.
Did you catch all that presentation?
So everybody's favorite topic requirement of the state. So what this is, this is an annual requirement that was put in place, I'd say a couple of years ago, it's probably been five years ago now, um, where the redevelopment commission has to come and report activity that took place last year. So in April, we submitted the information to the state and you should have gotten a copy of that. It's a two-page Excel file. This is kind of a little summary of the information that we have to include in there. We'll hit a couple of high points. Next year, there'll actually be more information to talk through because in twenty-twenty-four, there really wasn't a lot of activity. The TIP areas, really, most of them is just paying debt service. And then, and the end of twenty-four, we did reach finalization on some work in the Hanson area that I'll talk about briefly. But those dollars didn't start to get paid out till this year. So that's why not a lot more to talk through. First page is just the redevelopment commission members, that's a requirement on the form. Second page, I told you I'm going to go fast unless you stop me. Uh, just a listing of your different allocation areas that you have. The newest allocation area up on Stairway Forty-seven is not included in here, that'll be in here next year. Um, as you can see, draw your attention to the, kind of to the right, far right column. Those are the expiration dates for the TIP areas. You can see that for all the areas that we've listed here, all these areas will be gone within the next ten years. Stairway Forty-seven will go beyond that. But all the, your TIP areas are starting to reach the point of maturity where they will roll off. At that point in time, that assessed valuation of those areas just goes to your tax calculations. It goes into your budget calculations for all the underlying units. Uh, the first one that will roll off is the Ninety-Sixth Street TIP area. That'll be um in early twenty-thirty. So about five years from now, that area, that area will go away. Uh, and then the rest of them really relate to the Hanson project area. You can see those Medco and the Jamestown areas that were done. The next schedule shows some summary information for the finances for the different TIP areas. And I won't go through every line unless you want me to, but I'll hit some high points. Um, so you have the different TIP areas laid out. And as I mentioned, really the activity last year was for debt service payments. Couple of exceptions of that, where there were some funds that were paid out of the Jamestown redevelopment area uh to the town for activities. Um, also for some of the work we did on the Hanson project, there were some professional fees paid out as well for that. But otherwise, it was debt service. One thing that's not on the schedule is, you might be thinking, what's the balance in some of these TIP areas? So Ninety-Sixth Street TIP area has about a million dollars in it at the end of last year. And so we've had some preliminary conversations with the town about other projects in that area that, that those funds can be used for as a joint project. Uh, that's what happened with that last bond issue for, for that area as well. And the Hanson TIP areas, that's area one and area two. Uh, the balance in those areas after we went through and made the payments, where the agreement I'll talk about in a second, going forward is just going to be one year's worth of debt service. We'll wipe it out every year with debt payments. There's a requirement for one year's worth of debt service and the senior bonds in those areas. Lit service reserved for those. And then the Medco TIP area, that, whatever revenue comes in, it goes out. Uh, one issue we've had there, which Debbie and I talked about, it seems like every six months. The payments from the taxpayer are not timely. So there's a lot of delays where they don't pay their taxes, they'll pay them late. So that's why you'll see a million dollars in revenue, literally four hundred thousand of expenditures. That's a timing issue, they didn't pay their taxes on time or didn't get put into the distribution. They get put into the next distribution. So it's something we're trying to work through, but they've had a lot of turnover. Private company. The next section just summarizes the expenditures. And you can see there, the bulk of that, as I mentioned, really for debt service payments. Last schedule showed the debt payments on the different bond issues. What I will bring up, and this is where I'll talk a little bit about some of the activities we did. The activities that took place was with Whitestown, is also with the developer, um, and with the county to really merge areas one and area two of the Hanson TIP area to allow funds from area one, which is the, the southern portion, when I say area one, the southern portion, the retail portion, to be used to pay debt service on area two, which is the northern distribution industrial portion of the area. Area one, we're generating a lot of money in excess of their debt payments. And so, to really, to the benefits of the county and of the developers and the town, to be able to utilize those funds from area one to help pay down area two bonds. Because if you look at this schedule, the third, fourth and fifth bonds have no payments going to them in twenty-twenty-four. And that's because there wasn't enough revenue in area two to make any payments on those bonds. What you're going to see next year is you will start to see payments on those bonds because we have those funds from area one. There were excess revenues in area one that were paid out as well. Uh, there were taxpayer payments uh that had accrued to about four million dollars that the county was on the hook for paying back. And that was paid back earlier this year. year. Most of that's going to be paid back, the rest of it will be paid back this year. And we can actually start to pay down the twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen bonds. So under this scenario, and based upon the estimates that we have, that were pre-SEA one, by the way, the bonds will be paid off long before twenty thirty-five, under that scenario. So we really anticipate these will get paid up much sooner, which benefits all the units. Once these get paid off, like I said, that assessed valuation goes to all their underlying tax units. Once our model's done, we'll update our numbers. It won't have a huge impact on our revenue numbers for a lot of this, because this is really detail. There are some apartments in it that will have an impact. But I think our estimates will be pretty close to where they're at. We may actually get, logically enough, a benefit from it, because the tax rates may go up, and so that would generate some additional tip, although in the bill-